Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Gilbert Planning Commission, meeting of March 6, 2013. With that, we'll get a roll call, please.
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Bianchi.
Here.
Commissioner Chad Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Steiger.
Here.
Alternate Kyle Paul.
Here.
Thank you. Can we get an approval of the agenda? Vice Chairman Peterson?
Chairman, the agenda this evening has changed just a little bit, so I'd like to go ahead and go through that. We'd like to pull item number eight from our consent agenda and move it to our public hearing part of the agenda. And we would like to move items 10 and 11 that have been requested to be continued to April 3rd to consent, and items 12 and 13 that have been withdrawn to our consent agenda, and items 14 and 15 to our consent agenda. So we would be hearing on consent numbers nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, and item number eight during the public hearing session.
Great. Do I have a ... counselor? No?
Go ahead, Nene. Well, the consent agenda is also a public hearing, so what you're doing is you're moving it from the consent to the non-consent, and the non-consent to the consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Steiger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairwoman.
Yes.
I'm an aye, except for I need to declare a conflict.
Okay, well, I think we can wait until we get to the actual consent agenda items.
You want me to wait?
And then we can announce your...
An aye away.
Okay, great, thanks. With that, we'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. With that in mind, is there anybody here that would like to speak under those circumstances? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing consent agenda. The consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commissioner's staff, an item may be removed from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. And with that in mind, we have agenda items number nine, UP 13-01, which is a conditional use permit for Classics and Fine Arts Academy located at Record Road and Warner Road. We have agenda item number 10, GP 12-08, which is a request to continue to the April 3rd Planning Commission meeting. Agenda item number 11, which is Z 12-22, which is also a request to move to the April 3rd Planning Commission meeting. Items 12 and 13, which have been requested for withdrawal, those are GP 12-09 and Z 12-24. Agenda item number 14, which is GP 13-01, which is a general plan amendment located at the southeast corner of Gilbert and Jermaine Roads, as well as this companion zoning case at agenda item number 15 for Z 13-01. And with that, do you want to go ahead and declare your conflict?
Yes, Chairwoman, I declare conflict on UP 13-01.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment cards for any of these matters? None. Is there anybody here that wants to speak, or is here to speak on any of these items? Okay, with that in mind, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais.
Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
I move to approve the consent agenda tonight with items nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, 15 including an amended condition that was provided to us on the dais this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson, a second by Commissioner Bianchi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, it passes unanimously. With that, we'll move to the public hearing non-consent portion of our agenda. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing, or a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And the only agenda item we have on the public hearing non-consent is agenda item number eight. It's UP 12-07, conditional use permit for crossroads at Santan Village, approximately 16.3 acres of real property located west of the southwest corner of Santan Village Parkway and Ray Road to a multifamily residential use and mixed-use regional commercial RC zoning district. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and welcome Ms. Amy Thames.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. If you'll recall, we saw this project at study session back last fall, August, and at that time, when I presented it, it did have a live-work component as 16 units along Columbus Street. And if you'll recall, Columbus Street is a private road, actually, that is along the east boundary of the property. Since then, the applicant had some difficulty with financing in regards to the live-work units. It is a little bit of a somewhat different idea for the banks to sort of wrap their heads around, and that had to be removed from the project. So the applicant has come back to present the project as a somewhat more standard multifamily project, still as part of the whole Crossroads PAD. And if you'll recall, back in August, I kind of touched on the history of this PAD and how it came to be, and how these parcels were in the PAD and then not in the PAD. And originally, within the PAD, there were two parcels, C and D, that were called the Lutheran Hospital Parcels. And they had, out of the whole PAD, the very specific development plan applied to those two parcels. Because of the specific development plan and the nature of that plan, and the fact the hospital never came to be, it actually became banner up at Higley and the freeway that we had to remove parcel C and D from the PAD because of ... it was an old PAD done back in 1999, and it's 175-page PAD with a lot of the ULDC, which is the Unified Land Development Code, the previous code to the current code that we use now, actually attached to that PAD. And so it was thought at that time best to take parcel C and D out. Now, those parcels are still owned by the primary developer and owner of the land in this area, and that landowner also still has control over many of the vacant parcels within the Crossroads PAD. Importantly, parcels A and E, which we are coming to a discussion about here. So the Crossroads PAD had 560, 580 acres in a PAD, and other than parcel C and D coming out of the PAD, the PAD is still intact. So with that being said, the developer and the owner are still developing these parcels with the hotel and the apartments that are under construction, and now this project, in a manner in keeping with what the Crossroads PAD set forth in their development guidelines, their landscape standards, their architectural standards, the same color palette. These parcels are still part of the overall master sign program for this development, and we still hold to that today. If amendments are made, they're made within that overall master sign program for these parcels. And in trying to sort of link these parcels back in, the town has entered into a planning/ development agreement with the landowner for parcels A and E and D, and there's a chart within your packets that kind of went over all the acreages and all the percentages and what's allowed with multifamily and what's not allowed with multifamily. And I'm not going to read the chart to you tonight unless you want to go in-depth with it. But basically, the long and short of it is that parcel D with its multifamily that's being presented here is still being developed in conformance with what was originally planned within this PAD. No, it's not a hospital, but the overall concept of this PAD, which was a regional mall with a mixed-use development surrounding it on the remaining acreages. And it is still, that is the way it has been developed, that is the way it is being developed. And we saw that with the use permit for the apartments under construction in parcel C last year when those were approved with the use permit. There's still the connectivity, there's the circulation, and the streetscape, and all the other elements that are part of this master planned area. So as the town entered into this development agreement, it was agreed upon that parcels A and E would limit the amount of multifamily allowed in them to a certain amount of acreage, 25 acres. And this parcel, D, could be brought forward with this use permit for multifamily for 17 acres. And the parcel directly east, which is the eastern half of parcel D, would be developed in a manner that was not residential and would be compatible with and integrated into the remainder of parcel D and parcel C so that it was an integrated mixed-use, and it completed that northern boundary, the northern northwest boundary of the PAD. As you'll recall, there is a private road, Columbus, that comes through the property, and there is Ivan, I believe it's Ivanhoe, that crosses this way, another private road. And then Coronado is a major collector with signalized intersection here as you enter the mall. Columbus, I misspoke or miswrote my staff report, I said it was signalized. It is incorrect. It is not signalized. It is a full motion access, though, at this location at the mall. And then you have the site plan of the project that we bring before you for the conditional use permit, which you'll recall, there is street parking along the private drive Columbus. There are urban little hardscape urban plazas that occur with front-entry stoops from these units along the street. These parking spaces are both visitor and resident parking spaces. They're not the primary resident space, they're a secondary parking space. And there is full parking internal with garages, covered stalls, and visitor parking and other empty, or not empty, but unmarked stalls throughout. So the main access is off Coronado. It would face the neighborhood commercial property across the street. Coronado will be finished out to its full width requirement, and there is full access on all sides of the project with a nice sort of more urban streetscape going down, connecting to the streetscape that was, that is under construction, and the same kind of streetscape with front-entry stoops and trees and stuff as you walk down toward the mall. So one thing that planning staff has asked for is an additional pedestrian gate out to Coronado, and one other additional pedestrian gate out to Ray Road. And there has been a request by staff to do a table, a traffic slowing, traffic table that is at the pedestrian access points as you cross to the parcel across the street so that traffic slows down and that the pedestrian has the right-of-way in those locations. And that has been added as a condition in your report. In order for the Planning Commission to approve the use permit, we must meet four findings. And finding one is the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of the persons living or working in the vicinity, the adjacent property of the neighborhood, or the general public. As I said, Coronado Road will be finished out. There is no parking for this project on Coronado Road. It is a gated apartment complex. Ray Road is already finished out, but sidewalk and landscape will be improved. There will be the addition of these private drives and roads that will help take traffic off of Coronado and off of Ray so that all the traffic from this project and the apartments to the south being constructed can have an opportunity to flow out to Santan Village Parkway without going onto Coronado, without going onto the streets that are there for the residents to the west. I'd also like to note that no residents to the west have called regarding this project. The project under construction has had contact with one resident to the west regarding a wall, and that is being remedied. Other than that, there has been no outstanding comment or emails, other than the one very first email, that was a general email about multifamily that was brought forward at study session a long time ago. And we have not heard from that person again. Finding number two, this plan conforms to the purpose, intent, and policies of the general plan and the policies applicable to this area and the neighborhood. West core design, Crossroads PAD, with this in mind, it was an urban outdoor mall with surrounding mixed-use development that all work together, sort of, now I say around the mall, but it's more of a linear concept than a circular concept in this case. The Gilbert general plan also supports it through various chapters, which I noted in your staff report, and also through the 202 growth area. We feel that this parcel is a good parcel for multifamily due to the single-family attached to the west, the single-family six to the west, and the fact that Coronado Road as a major collector, excuse me, acts as a buffer between the two and a distance separator. And then the mixed-use, or the multifamily then helps to buffer the commercial from any residential component so that it really is a layering of uses that all work synergistically together and well-adjacent to each other. So we do not feel that there is any issues there, and that obviously, and as many of you know from sitting on the general plan, different groups, that with the finishing of circulation such as a major collector is important, the growth area, this was always an area that was intended for density and intensity. Community design offering the diversity of housing throughout Gilbert, I think we've heard, you know, over time that there's a lack of some multifamily in town, and that we need to be careful which parcels that it goes on for regional commercial, but this is one parcel that has good viability for multifamily that staff believes. Finding number three, the proposed use conforms to the conditions, requirements, and standards required by the zoning code or applicable state and federal standards. This meets access requirements and circulation requirements set forth by the traffic department, the code, and standard engineering cross-sections. Parking is onsite, it meets all parking requirements. They've asked for no deviations or modifications. Utilities, they're in place. The utilities were planned for the density of this area. They're there, they're ready to tap, they're ready to go. Screening, there's a step-back required. The apartments have met the step-back. Along Coronado, they've done two-story, and along Ray Road, the roof line is in the step-back area, so it's already sloping back and meeting the requirements. Signage is still within the Santan Village master sign program, and the lighting meets all lighting requirements for the site. Finding number four, the proposed use as condition would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. With the improved streetscape, the connectivity to mall, no on-street parking, and the other additional sidewalks and landscape, we believe that this would be a benefit to the Coronado streetscape and the neighbors that access Coronado. And as I've said, we've had no outstanding complaints or issues from them at this time. The owner of the property and the developer are here this evening and are willing to speak, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Thames. Is there any questions for staff? Commissioner Bianchi?
So Amy, you said it meets the side step-back requirements as far as step-back from residential. The ones that are going to be closest to residential, are those going to be two stories, or can they go up to three stories even with the step-back? I know the RC max height is 55 feet, so I imagine they're not going to be higher than that. But when you get closer to that residential to the west, is it going to be a two-story product or three?
The way it's constructed, Commissioner Bianchi and Madam Chairperson, the way it's constructed along Coronado is they are two-story along Coronado, and then, so it's two-story or greater than 35 feet. So as they start to step up, they're already at three-story, but they're far enough back. And then as on Ray Road, it's a slope of the roof that's within that step-back, and so it's already stepping back, so there's not an issue out there. And you are the distance of a major arterial across from the single house that's to the north.
Okay, and then, and there is additional, is there a road behind there between the housing, the single-family housing, and is that Coronado?
Yes, that's Coronado, and I believe, I want to say it's 110-foot right-of-way off the top of my head, but I'm not going to swear to that one. So it's a major collector there, is Coronado, and it's signalized at the mall.
And as long as they're two stories adjacent. Okay, thanks, Amy.
Any further questions for staff? I had one. On the stipulation number three, says a traffic calming table will be added on the private street, Columbus, at the major pedestrian crossings. What is a traffic calming table? Is that similar to, like a speed hump, or?
Well, Madam Chairperson, a speed hump or speed bump go up and over, and it's rounded. Where a speed table will go up, be flat for a distance, and then go back down.
Got it. Okay.
And traffic was totally in support of that, and it was actually brought forward by staff.
And that's going to be located where again? Do you know?
It would be at the, where, in fact, I'll point to it. It would be right about here at this main urban plaza area to take the main spine circulation across Columbus, right here. So it would be right in this area of the road.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant up. If you could give your name and address for the record, or actually, city.
What picture would you like him on? Don't need a picture. Good evening. My name is John Ludkey, LWI Properties, Del Mar, California. I really think Amy has, again, done a great job of describing the project, so I don't know that I have anything meaningful to add to the discussion, so I would just propose that I answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Is there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Steiger?
Please give me an idea of what your thoughts are on the other half of Block D, assuming that it's within the, even though this is a use permit, is that question allowed, given the nature of what's in front of us?
It would be beyond the scope of the discussion.
Okay. I withdraw that question then. Thank you.
But if you feel that it's relevant to your decision on the use permit, then the applicant can answer the question.
Okay. I'd like to understand.
Probably thinks it's relevant when you ask it.
Is it relevant to your question?
Yeah, it's relevant.
Commissioners, let me jump in for a second. Under the planning slash development agreement that was approved, one of the conditions of that is that the remainder of D would be developed in a manner that is non-residential and compatible so that it integrates with parcel C and D that are developed. We do not know what the use will be. It's any use within regional commercial that's allowed, but it would be...
Non-residential?
And we would hope that maybe some, yes, it would be non-residential, and it would be something that had on-street, we're hoping that would, I'm kind of putting words into your mouth, a little bit of on-street parking, and the plazas meeting and being compatible so that if you had that traffic table and those pedestrians coming across, that it would meet in a plaza that would be a welcoming plaza and lead you into a development. It would be integrated, and we would be looking for those kind of factors.
Thank you. That answered the question.
Would it be beyond the scope, be beyond the scope to stipulate, Nathan, to that? And I'm just kidding.
Yes, a little bit. Yes.
Well, it's in a development agreement already, so...
All right, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ludkey. Is there anybody here? I don't see any cards to speak. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais. Who wants to go first? Commissioner Steiger? No? Commissioner Ailer?
Okay. Well, looking at the design and the layout of the site plan and how they've stepped back further the ordinance, but it's nice how the elevations change, there's articulation within the building, and you can see defined pathways for the pedestrians hopefully to connect across the street and into the future. But it looks like there's design for the future of development and not trying to make an island out of itself where, you know, if, it is gated, but it is also inviting to the rest of the neighborhood. So at that point, I'd be in favor of this project going through.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ready for a motion?
Commissioner Fuller?
Anybody else? Tony, any comments?
What's that?
Do you have any comments?
No, I would echo what Commissioner Ailer said, and I think we vetted this when we kind of looked at it from a, with the live-work atmosphere, the proposal that we saw. But no, I was okay. I'm a little concerned with the step-backs when it gets to that residential. It sounds like those are addressed, so I'd be in favor of it, yes.
And I would probably just like to say, too, that I think that since this is a regional commercial district, the zoning district, and the use seems to meet all four findings as required, and so we don't have anybody here in opposition, and the applicant is designed around the code, so I would be in support as well. So we'll go ahead and entertain a motion then.
Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
Approval of UP 12-07 Crossroads at Santan Village, your request for a conditional use permit to permit multifamily residential in the regional commercial zoning district on a 16.34-acre property located west of the southwest corner of Santan Village Parkway and Ray Road.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Peterson. Second?
Do you specifically have to say that the findings are met in the motion?
Well, it doesn't say that on my...
I know, it doesn't on mine either, but I thought you had to.
But you are correct, that we should say that the findings have been met to approve the use permit.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Fuller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Moving along pretty quickly here. All right, agenda item number 16, administrative item, minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of February 6, 2013. Commissioner Bianchi, any changes?
I did not have any changes, although some folks are getting better than me at catching stuff lately.
Anybody else?
If there are no changes, I would move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Bianchi, a second by Commissioner Steiger. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on to communications. Report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. I don't think that I have anything. Commissioner Steiger?
The fire department is engaged in a process of working towards certification by a national organization, and one of the elements of that, it requires them to develop a strategic plan. There have been, there were two meetings, I guess, where residents had the opportunity to meet with senior leader from the fire department, get a presentation on about six or seven slides on what the certification process is about. And there's a survey that the fire department is, has put out, it's online, and Neighborhood Services has put information out on it. They're seeking resident input on levels of satisfaction with the different services and any feedback. So if you have the opportunity, if you've seen one of those invitations, great, please take the time to fill it out. If not, then you could always head to the town's webpage. But I found that it was, it's really great to see the fire department take this step in working towards the national certification, and one of the benefits of that, or that one of the direct benefits could be as they are able to quantify and qualify the levels of service and be able to compare it to other communities around us, such as Tempe, Mesa, and Chandler who are certified, that information can help to reduce the insurance rates for businesses and for homeowners. So it's a very good thing, and if you have the opportunity to see it, you just, it's an awesome process that the town and the people involved from the fire department will benefit from.
Thank you, Commissioner Steiger. Commissioner Peterson?
I attended the ASU Masters of Real Estate Development students' presentations this past Friday, right here in the chamber, and the master students all came together as a group, and they had to split off into six different groups and basically make themselves each a development company, and come in and present to the Town of Gilbert what they would do with the Town of Gilbert-owned property in the Heritage District. So each company did their own presentation of what they would do with that property, how they would develop it, where they would get their financing, all of the agreements they would make, how much money they would make, how much the Town of Gilbert would make. It was quite an interesting process. It lasted all day, but it was great to watch, and they're going to also do another step in May for their thesis groups. They'll put together a more in-depth, detailed description of what they would build in the Heritage District. So it was great to see somebody come in and take our property and show us different ways to look at it, I think, after living here for so long and being on the Planning Commission, and we've had a lot of talk about the Heritage District lately, that it was nice to see an outside perspective come in, and really, six different perspectives, because they came in with six different companies and views on that. Everybody did a great job. The presentations were all recorded by Gilbert Digital, and they're being uploaded now to the Gilbert Town YouTube page. Yes, we have a YouTube page, it's Town of Gilbert, Arizona. And I think two of them are up there now, so if you wanted to watch them... And I think two of them are up there now, so if you wanted to watch them, they're quite good and they're quite interesting. So if you wanted to watch them, they are slowly being added. And then last night, as the liaison from the Planning Commission, I attended the Parks and Recs Master Plan Open House at the library, and they had a pretty good attendance, and they put up big sheets all over the walls that you could go up and show where your interests lie concerning every different facet of the parks, recreation, funding, everything that you could think of that's in that, that's going to be in that Parks and Recs open space plan that's coming forward, which is a follow-through to the general plan that was passed a couple years ago. So it was great to be there and be a part of that, and they should be wrapping up that process, bringing it back to the Parks and Recs group probably in May, and maybe to the town council, they're saying maybe June or July. So hopefully that that plan will be presented to the town council this summer, and we'll get to see a final version of that. They're working hard on it, and they're doing a great job. They really are, really in-depth, too. So I think that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you, Bridgette. I do have one item. I think we unfortunately lost one of our Design Review Board members a couple weeks ago, Gary Pedersen, who served on the Design Review Board for a long time. I think he actually may have served on the Planning Commission for a while as well. So we give our condolences to the family and thank him for his service. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 18, report from Councilmember Liaison Daniels.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time and your efficiency tonight. My family will be excited to see me, as I'm sure yours will as well. Couple different things coming up on the agenda. Tomorrow night for our council meeting, the long-awaited and anticipated conference class study is coming forward for the council to vote on, and I'm greatly enthusiastic and excited about where I think we're going tomorrow night based on our study session discussion yesterday, and so pleased to hear that we're moving forward in that process. March 23rd is the mayor's character counts run. It's the first run of its kind. Gilbert Community Action Network has been hard at work making this happen, and it's a two-person relay, either a parent and child or student and teacher, and so we're looking to involve as many people as possible to make that happen. So the first time all proceeds for that will go to fund the character counts program where we provide awards, an award ceremony and awards for our students who are exemplary in providing character within their schools. Also, April, I want to say it's 5th and 6th, nope, it's not 5th and 6th, it's the 3rd and 4th, is student government days, and that is a chance for our high-school-age kids to come to town hall to take over some of the positions within our local government and really get a hands-on experience to understand what we do here in the town. And so they'll be following around many of our staff members and participating in that. So if the staff looks exceptionally tired at our Planning Commission meeting on the 4th, you'll know why they will be shadowed.
They're taking over our roles, too?
That's right. Shadowed all day. So with those things, I think the rest of it I can probably announce at the next. But Gilbert's a great place to be, great place to live, and we appreciate your efforts to make that happen.
Great, thank you. Agenda Item Number 19, report from Planning Services Manager, Linda Edwards. She has none. All right, well then, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, and we'll reconvene the study session then. Back to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Z1304. Uh-oh, we lost the mics.
Uh-oh.
We lost the mics. Somebody back there?
That's a good time for me to take out.
Yes. Hello? Oh, we're on. We're on. Okay. Z1304, citizen review and initiation of amendment to the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code, Chapter One, zoning regulations, Division Two, land use designations, the whole spiel here. Multifamily related to amending the residential permanent multifamily use, including these options. Number one, adding additional regulations in the...